Good evening, everybody. My name is John Lor, Chair of the Milis Finance Committee. I'd like to call tonight's meeting into order. Today is May 1st, 2024, at 7:00 PM on Wednesday. And before we get going, I'd like to have all the members introduce themselves, starting off to my left.
Sarah Reyes.
Joyce Boyardi.
Peter Underhill.
Jody Garson.
Kathy McInnes.
Jen Zerotsky.
Thank you. Few other items as we get going here. I always like to mention at the beginning of every meeting that, one, you can watch this at home on the local channel access that you have through your TV or any device you have at home, as well as you can watch this on YouTube on demand once it gets posted. And of course, you can almost come to these meetings, and there's a few more people here, but not too many more. And then last, all the information that we cover in every meeting, as well as tonight, can be found on the Milis Finance page on the Milis website. So please take a look at all the material that's out there. In addition, there's also a great resource page on the Milis website that talks about the town meeting and the override. That's one of the articles coming up at the town meeting as well. And then last, just a friendly reminder to speak into the microphones, and if you come up to the podium, please speak into the microphone, introduce yourself, and we'll go from there. So with that said, I'd like to open up the pre-town public meeting and get right into it. And we'll start off with Article 1, obviously, but what I wanted to do is just to, for the members and for the audience members as well, we're going to go through the motions, and they can be done either formally or informally, depending on what each member wants to do. Please state how the article should be voted, if it's simple majority, four fifths, et cetera. And please read the motions, and then we'll go through discussion. And that's about it. So with that, we'll get going with Article number 1.
That would be me, and I have my papers in front of me.
Perfect.
Yeah.
I've been reminded that I didn't at one of our. I moved at the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $328.86 and transfer this from the sum of $195.72 from sewer enterprise reserves and transfer the sum of $195.72 from water enterprise reserves for the total sum of $720.30 for unpaid bills incurred by the town departments from previous fiscal years. The department would be Recreation, vendor Amazon, amount 154.93; Department Recreation, vendor Amazon, 68.93; Town Clerk's Office, R&amp;R Donley, 105; DPW Sewer, Verizon, 195.72; DPW Water, Verizon, 195.72, making a total of $720.30. This was submitted by the Select Board. A four-fifths majority vote is required.
Thank you, Pete.
Article 1 has been moved. Oh, that would be Brutus, sorry. Any discussion?
Okay, so you can.
Yeah, Article 1 has been moved and seconded. Any discussion, Brutus would say, and then I would then in turn give information about the article. This article, if approved, is a semi-annual article to fund bills incurred in the previous fiscal years. The bill for this town meeting totals 720.30. That's $720.30 and will be funded from free cash sewer and water enterprise. These bills occurred after the close of fiscal year ending June 20th, 2023. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article unanimously.
Thank you. Discussion. Seems relatively straightforward, so if there's no discussion, we will go to Article 2.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move that the town vote to dismiss Article 2.
It's been seconded.
Article 2 is placeholder in the warrant for additional operating expenses after the last spring town meeting. There are no additional operating expenses since the last spring town meeting, therefore this article is unnecessary and should be dismissed.
Sounds good. Moving on to Article 3, which is myself. I move that the town vote to fix the compensation of elected officers provided for Reserve Fund and to raise and appropriate, including appropriations, from taxation and by transfer from available funds, all as specified below, the sum of $43,827,557 to defray charges and expenses to the town, including debt and interest and the Reserve Fund for the general fund and the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, as outlined in Table 2 of the Finance Committee report with the following revenue sources. Taxation, $41,914,320; ambulance fund, $822,519; perpetual care interest of $332; sale of cemetery lots, $7,358; cell tower revenue, $56,334; bond premium release, $90,198; and last, marijuana impact fees, $189,780. And to authorize the following transfers: Sewer fund indirect cost to general fund, $259,775; water fund indirect cost to general fund, $317,503; stormwater fund indirect cost to general fund, $169,438. This was submitted by the Select Board, and this requires a simple majority vote. And this was approved by the Finance Committee, 7 to 1.
Second.
It has been seconded. So this is for the fiscal year budget. This is currently a balanced budget. Just as a reminder that this has nothing to do with the override just yet. There would be no new positions for police or fire. However, there would be 15.3 full-time equivalents, cut positions from the school. These cuts have been specifically outlined by the school, and those follow as 7.2 FTEs at Clyde Brown, 4.6 FTEs at the middle school, 4.0 FTEs at the high school. Further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
Just quickly, I'm the one that did not support this, and because today, even though several months and years have gone by requesting indirect costs charged to the sewer, water, and stormwater enterprises have not been given to anyone, I can't support this. Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, are you speaking to the mic?
Yep, go ahead.
You'd think I know by now. Do you plan on, and I can't remember if you did, but are you planning on defining an FTE? And do you know if the cuts include partial FTEs, or are they whole number positions?
Great point. I can define. In one world, FTE stands for full-time employee. In other worlds, and in the school situations, it's a full-time equivalent. And that could be either someone who has a 1.0, or it could be a .6, a .4, or .2, such as a paraprofessional. I can outline that during the town meeting, and it would probably be wise to do that.
Thank you.
If there's no other further discussion, we'll go on to Article 4. And Article 4 is me. I move that if the town vote to raise and appropriate the following amounts from the tax levy for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, for departmental operating purposes and other town expenses contingent upon passage of a proposition two-and-a-half ballot question under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c). The purpose and recommended amounts would be the school department of $1,070,767; the police department wages, $180,000; fire department wages, $95,118; Department of Public Work wages, $54,115. Total contingent appropriations would be $1.4 million, and this is voted by a simple majority. And the Finance Committee approves this, 7 to 1.
Second.
As many residents know, let me see here, let me check my notes here. As many residents know, and reviewing last year's pre-town meeting and the town meeting for that matter, the school budget had a deficit of $938,697. The goal last year was to fund the deficit through a combination of free cash and the stabilization fund. The Select Board stated that this was going to be a one-time fix, and they would not be doing it in the following years. Also during that time, seven FTEs, full-time equivalents, were cut from last year's school budget. A year later now, there's been no impactful school-state funding increase, and salaries, expenses have continued to go up, with a shortfall of the override amount of $1,070,767. In addition to the town, on the municipal side, not the school side, we've experienced growth, and over the years have increased demand in services and resources. The Fire Police, EPW, requested additional positions for each department. Between the school and these departments, the Select Board is recommending an override to accommodate the increase in expense and growth. This override will solve the deficit in resources and put these departments in line with the next five-year financial projections. Further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm just, could someone please tell me, I couldn't find it in the budget book that was provided, the starting salary for a police officer, a rookie police officer? Is it $90,000 to?
For this override or just in general?
It would include the override, I guess.
Yeah.
Oh.
Chief?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So the answer with a degree is yes. Well, for a rookie, no. But we have made a practice of taking highly trained officers with an abundance of experience from other agencies that want to be in Milis, and it's a guarantee that we're not going to lose them to another community. Whereas if we hire a new police officer, chances are we run the risk of losing them to a police department, which has happened twice now in seven years. And in that seven years, although we lost two police officers, we gained a police officer with 20 years' experience from the city of Waltham and the Major Crime Division. We gained a police officer from the town of Medfield with 20 years on the job as a detective. We gained a police officer from the town of Medfield that left as a sergeant and came here as a patrolman. And we just gained another officer, Officer Jewett, with 15 years from the town of Ashland to come here because they wanted to be here. And if you're looking for an offset, I would suggest that it costs somewhere between $60,000 and $70,000 a year to train a new recruit before they even hit the road.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just remember a few years ago when you hired, you had, there was a year or so when you hired one or two. There was a span that I thought people preferred rookies because they have to stay three years here, or they have to pay back certain amounts, and.
At the time, that could have been the case, but towns are offering hiring incentives in the range of $7,000 to $10,000 to sign on. So if they were to leave before the three years hit, they would forego their $3,000 check back from the town for staying here for three years and instead pick up a check between $7,000 and $10,000.
Thank you, Chief. I'm just asking these questions because they've been asked.
Absolutely. Yeah, of course, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Just further to clarify, and I think it's along the lines of Kathy's questioning, is that $90,000 a burdened, fully burdened estimate?
Like with benefits?
To include benefits or not? Is that what you're asking?
No.
It does not? Correct me if I'm wrong, it does not. Yeah, so it'd be salary then benefits. That question was asked in a prior meeting, and benefits having been included in the financial projections for fiscal year '25.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Please identify yourself.
Craig Schultz, Chairman of the Board of Select.
Thank you.
Select Board, I've got to get it right. Benefits are an estimate every year. We don't know exactly how many people are going to take them or not. We feel that we have enough of a cushion in it to absorb the police officers, the positions we're hiring. It's never an exact science.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, we'll go to Article 5.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate from the sewer department receipts the following sums to operate the sewer enterprise fund beginning July 1st, 2024. Salaries and wages, $290,740; expenses, $1,340,952, for a total of $1,631,692. This was submitted by the Select Board, and a simple majority is needed to pass the article. Second. Discussion?
Discussion.
Yep. All right, do you want me to?
I think it reads as it is, but do you want to summarize it?
I can. This article appropriates funding, including funds for personnel costs, contract expenses, and debt service necessarily to operate the town sewer service and infrastructure. This utility enterprise is funded via user fees based on metered or estimated usage.
Thank you, Jen. Any further discussion? None heard. Let's move on to Article 6, which I believe is you, Jen.
Yeah, the next two. They're very similar. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate from Water Department receipts the following sums to operate the Water Enterprise Fund beginning July 1st, 2024. Salaries and wages, $482,165; expenses, $2,139,409, for a total of $2,621,574. Yep. Then this is also submitted by the Select Board, and a simple majority is needed to pass it. Second.
Discussion? No further discussion?
And the narrative is very similar. It's funded via user fees based on metered or estimated uses, and that's going to be the case. Well, no, we'll talk about the next one when I get there. Okay. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate from Stormwater Department receipts the following sums to operate the Stormwater Enterprise Fund beginning July 1st, 2024. Salaries and wages, $257,806; expenses, $490,76, for a total of $747,882. This was also submitted by the Select Board, and we need a simple majority to pass it. Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I don't think so. Thank you, Jen.
Yep.
Article 8.
Article 8 is a consent agenda article which would approve the items as written in the warrant, so let me go through what those are. The four consent articles, well, these all require annual approval at town meeting. The first article would amend Schedule A of the Salary Plan and Schedule C Employee Benefits of the Personnel Plan for Non-Union Employees effective July 1st. The Salary Plan includes a 2% Cost of Living Adjustment for non-union employees that currently are under this plan, and the changes to benefits will bring the Personnel Plan in line with the current collective bargaining agreements. So, want to do any questions as we go or at the end?
We can ask discussion and questions as we go. I think that's fine. Any questions up to this point? I think we're good. Thank you.
Okay. The second consent article authorizes the Board of Health to appoint any of its members to another town office or position for which it has appointing authority, and we're just required to pass this according to state law every year.
Discussion? No discussion?
Yep. The third, it's all sorts of numbers. This authorizes the town to use revolving funds that have their own sources of revenue, which are accounted for separately from other town funds. So most of these functions are mostly self-funded, and they spend their revenues without additional appropriations up to the limits authorized by the town. So the money comes in, but it has to be appropriated every year.
Any questions or comments on the revolving funds? None heard.
All right. And the fourth article allocates community preservation funds into various reserve funds which are required by the Community Preservation Act for administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses that would be for fiscal year 2025. And those, I believe, are all enumerated. Are they enumerated in the warrant?
These items?
Well, we have it there, but yes, so we have it. Yep, it's in the Finance Committee report, so I don't feel the need to read all of that.
Sounds good. Any questions on that? None. Okay. So that's your fourth. Okay. Going on to Article 9, if there are no questions.
Kathy. I move that the town vote to transfer from the Sewer Enterprise Reserve Fund the sum of $137,630 to fund the FY '25 Sewer Infiltration and Inflow Investigation of the Sewer System in Milis.
Second.
It's been seconded. Go ahead, Kathy.
The inflow and infiltration investigation is mandated but not funded by the Commonwealth to investigate and correct leaks in the sewer system.
Sounds good. Further discussion? None. Just a reminder to members that at town meeting to make sure that you include what the vote is on each article.
Oh, yeah.
Which is fine, no problem. Just a reminder, because the moderator will ask that.
Yeah.
And I think I got called on it last time, so. Okay, no further discussion? Move on to Article 10.
I move that the town vote to transfer from Water Enterprise Reserve Fund the sum of $187,000 to fund a lead service line inventory of the water system in Milis. And this article also mandated and unfunded by the Commonwealth tests lead and copper amounts in certain residents in Milis. And thank you to those that do that.
Second.
Any further discussion on Article 10? Give me a second. Moving along here. Yeah, I'll start with that. Article 11.
Article 11. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $17,000 from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve Fund for the Oak Grove Farm Trail Improvement Phase 3 project.
Second. Sorry.
Fine, it's all right. Joyce, she'll be, yeah, go ahead, go ahead. Sorry to interrupt.
This was unanimously, unanimously approved by the Finance Committee. So discussion points, this is phase 3. They've done great work over in the Oak Grove Farm. These funds do not raise anyone's taxes. They come from an existing preservation fund, so this will not increase anyone's tax bill. It'll do nothing but improve the trails at Oak Grove Farm, so it's a win.
It's impressive what they've done over there.
Yeah.
Definitely. Any discussion on trails, Oak Grove trails? No discussion. Moving on to Article 12.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $50,000 from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Reserve Fund for the Oak Grove Farmhouse Phase 1 project. This was unanimously approved, voted to be approved unanimously by the Finance Committee.
Second.
All right. The Oak Grove Farmhouse is on the National Register of Historic Places. Oh, not close enough to the microphone, my apologies. Thank you, Ellen. The Oak Grove Farmhouse is on the National Register of Historic Places and needs some work. This Phase 1 project will start sealing the envelope of the building. This is limited just to the roofwork of that building. Further phases will seal the windows and walls and masonry before they start moving inside the building. This is standard procedure for any historical preservation and is completely necessary. And like the previous article, this does not impact anyone's tax bill. This comes from an existing historic preservation fund. Again, so it's nothing but a win for the town of Milis.
Discussion? Just to add as a footnote, Nate Moltynski presented this at a prior meeting, and online there's a great presentation on the Oak Grove Farmhouse, and if you haven't taken a look at it, I recommend that you do, because I know that a lot of us drive by it every day and also utilize the space on a regular basis, so it's good information. Any further discussion? Article 13. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $291,232 and transfer from the Water Enterprise Reserve Fund the sum of $10,000, and transfer from the Sewer Enterprise Reserve Fund the sum of $10,000, and transfer from the Stormwater Enterprise Reserve Fund the sum of $10,000, for a total sum of $321,232 to fund the following capital items. These capital items are the deep from the department, capital item in the amount, DPW Safety Equipment for $40,000; the fire department, Chevy Tahoe for $85,000; fire portable radios for $26,232; library, library exist, excuse me, exterior building repairs for $35,000; school MPS server project of $65,000; school MPS switch project for $70,000 totaling to the $321,232. And to authorize the Select Board to dispose of old vehicles or equipment by outright sale, trade, auction, or otherwise, and that the proceeds from such disposal be applied to the purchase price of vehicle or equipment or take other action in relation thereto. Submitted by the Select Board, and this vote is simple majority, and this was approved by the Finance Committee, 8 to 0.
Second.
These are pretty straightforward, but just to add a little color around it, in the Finance Committee report, it's actually outlined that there were actually eight items that were on the list, and the two that were not included in this capital planning was the aerial boom lift and the skid steer. Those were tabled off. Those funds were utilized for the stabilization fund. On another note, Representative Vaughn secured $20,000 of IT grant that can be utilized towards the server replacement, so that number will be reduced by the grant amount as well. Questions on capital planning? Comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So with that grant, we're keeping the numbers the same for this article?
To my knowledge, we are. I believe the grant just came out, but they might need to be amended, but I'll let the town administrator speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just caution the Finance Committee that although the House has voted for that earmark, that grant, it is not, until it's signed by the governor, it is not definite. And even after that, there's always a chance the governor could pull some of that money back. So I would recommend that there be no change to Article 13, and if that grant fully comes through, we'd hopefully receive that sometime in the summer, and then we could put the money back in the account where it could be transferred out at a later time.
Perfect. I appreciate you clarifying that for me.
Thank you.
That does. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on to Article 14. Sarah.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $41,688.57 from free cash into the opioid settlement revenue fund, such sum of money being equal to that amount allocated as of June 30th, 2023 by the state to the town from the settlements resulting from the town's participation in the national opioid multi-district litigation. This motion was submitted by the Select Board. It requires a simple majority, and it was voted to approve unanimously by the Finance Committee.
Second.
So just a few points of discussion for tonight. The total amount that Milis will receive from their portion allocated from the settlement would be $169,209.79, which is to be paid out in increments between the years 2022 and 2038 per an existing municipal payment schedule, and so this is what has been received so far.
Any further discussion on that? None heard? Move on to Article 15.
So me.
Uh, 15.
I move that the town vote to borrow under the provisions of MGL Chapter 44, any other enabling authority, the sum of $68,816 for the lease slash purchase of one police cruiser. This was submitted by the select board, it requires a two-thirds majority, and, oh, I think it was unanimously approved.
It was.
Okay, thank you. Was unanimously approved, thank you.
Second.
Okay, so just a few points for discussion for tonight. This article is authorized in the town to enter into a three-year lease to purchase agreement for one new replacement police cruiser in the amount of $68,816. The first year cost of $22,938.67 is included in Article Three, the FY25 operating budget. The cruiser will be available for purchase for $1 after completion of the third year of lease.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comments? Questions? Moving on. Article 16.
Good evening. Article 16. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $75,000 to fund the environmental study and DEP reporting of areas of the library parking lot and adjoining properties.
Second.
Points of discussion, some background. This article requires a simple majority. The Finance Committee recommends approval by a vote of nine to zero. This appropriation would be for study of, further study of contaminated soil in the area of the library parking lot. When the library was constructed, there was contamination found and remediated. However, subsequent to a budding neighbor's complaint, the DEP mandated that further study and monitoring of that area be required, and so the $75,000 would cover that.
Any further thoughts or discussion? Thank you, Pete. Article 17.
I move that the town vote to rescind the debt authorization of $711,000, $728, excuse me, for drainage improvements at the intersection of Village Street and Birch Street, which is approved under Article 19 of the annual town meeting of May 1, 2021. This article, if approved, would require a simple majority.
Second.
For discussion points, this article rescinds a previous appropriation which was approved during the annual town meeting of 2021. That work, drainage work, stormwater drainage work and improvements in the area of Birch and Village was deemed no longer necessary. So this does not, the money was never borrowed or appropriated at that time, and now this really just cleans the books and takes this authorization away from, takes it off the books.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? None heard? Article 18.
I move that the town vote to petition the Massachusetts General Court to file for special legislation to amend the Town of Millis Charter as follows. Section 3-5, position of town administrator, by adding the following to Article 3, Section 5, 11, shall have the power to approve all payroll and expense warrants for payment of town funds. Such approval shall be sufficient authority to authorize payment of the same by the town treasurer. In the event of the absence of the town administrator, the select board shall approve such warrants. If a vacancy exists in the office of the town administrator, the select board shall approve all such warrants, or may delegate such responsibility to a temporary town administrator. This article, if approved, would require a simple majority.
Second.
This article essentially provides authority for, excuse me, for the town administrator to sign accounts payable and payroll warrants, whereas currently those warrants have to be signed either weekly or bi-weekly by two select board members to provide that authorization, which has been deemed unnecessary and a bit cumbersome, given that we only have three select board members. This, the Finance Committee recommends approval of the article by a vote of eight to one.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comments? None heard? Moving on to Article 19.
Article 19. I move that the town vote to approve increasing the senior work program amount from $1,500 each year to $2,000 each year pursuant to MGL Chapter 59, Section K. This was submitted by the select board, this article requires a simple majority. Discussion.
Yep, go ahead. Discussion.
The purpose of this article is to increase the amount, the amount from $1,500 to $2,000 for the senior age 60-plus and veterans' work program. This is a program in which senior residents aged 60 or older and veterans commit to work in a specific number of hours for our town department in exchange for a credit applied to the proportion, to a portion of their property tax. The credit is currently $1,500 for 100 hours of work. The number of hours worked are based on the state's minimum wage amount, currently $15 per hour. Do you want me to stop?
Carol Johnson, Finance Director, this is only for the senior worker program, it does not affect the veterans. The veterans were already raised before.
Actually, when you read the work program, it is, it is for the veterans as well, though.
But this, the state law that you're referring to is only to increase the seniors, it's not, and it specifically states it's not to increase the veterans. The veterans was increased last year.
My apologies.
That's okay.
So, for the veteran, for the seniors, the credit is currently $1,500 for 100 hours of work. The number of hours worked are based on the state's minimum wage amounts, currently $15 per hour. The funding for the program comes from the assessors overlay account, so there's nothing that will be additional taxes for the taxpayers. This program is administered by the Council on Aging for seniors and by, well, for seniors. The goals of the program are to enhance the ability of the town departments to extend their services as needed beyond the scope achievable with current staffing and appropriations, providing quality services to the town at a reasonable cost, and retain seniors and veteran, well, seniors in the community by reducing their tax burden.
Thank you, Joyce.
You're welcome.
I imagine you'll make some updates for town meeting?
Yes.
All right, good. Thank you, Carol, for clarifying that. Any further thoughts, questions, comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm just wondering if, is there a number, Joyce, of a maximum number?
Yes.
Maybe you might want to.
There, it's available for 20 seniors.
20, okay.
And it is available for veterans as well, this program, this working program, and that would be five, five veterans. But this, they apparently have already received their benefits.
Last year.
So this would be affecting 20 residents, so people could apply. I don't know that we have 20 residents currently enrolled.
Good evening, Henry Gannon, Council on Aging Director. Currently, we do have 20 residents, and I will get back to you after I talk to the Veteran Services Officer. How about the other piece?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, not a problem.
Thank you. Any further thoughts, questions, comments? None heard? Article 20.
Well, that would be me again. Mr. Chair, I move that the town vote to accept MGL Chapter 59, Section 5C-1/2, the HEROES Act, which provides for additional real estate tax exemption for taxpayers who are granted personal exemptions on their domiciles under MGL Chapter 59, Section 5, including certain blind persons, veterans, surviving spouses, and seniors, and to provide that the additional exemption shall not exceed 100% of the personal exemption, to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, 2024. This was submitted by the select board, and the, this article requires a simple majority vote, and it was approved by our board unanimously.
Second.
Mr. Chair, an act honoring, empowering, and recognizing our service members and veterans filed into legislation by Governor Maury Healy to increase benefits, modernize services, and promote inclusively for Massachusetts veterans. Thus, the HERO Act, honoring, empowering, recognizing our. HERO Act provision is to increase local flexibility for veterans' property tax exemptions. Creates two separate local options. The first allows municipalities to double the veterans' property tax exemption without doubling all other exemption clauses. The second ties the annual property tax abatement amount to inflation, allowing accepted property tax amounts to increase with inflation. Clause 22, currently 20 Millis, 25 Millis disabled veterans are eligible. Veterans with a service-connected disability of 10% or more, veterans awarded the Purple Heart, surviving parents of military personnel who dies in military service, which would be the Gold Star families, spouses where the domicile is owned by the veteran spouse and surviving spouses who have not remarried, of veterans entitled to exemptions under Clause 22. Surviving spouses who have remarried, veterans as long as their assets' whole worth less than mortgage on their property do not exceed $20,000. Clause 22 property tax abatement would increase from $400 to $800 per year. Clause 22E, currently 19 Millis fully disabled veterans are eligible. Veterans who have a service-connected disability of 100%. Spouses where veteran spouses own the domicile, or surviving spouses of the veterans entitled to the exception under Clause 22E. Clause 22E property tax exemption increases from $1,000 to $2,000. The money for the additional tax relief, again, comes from the form of, from the town's overlay account, so it will not impact taxpayers. Finance Committee record of ends approval.
Thank you, Joyce. Any further questions, comments? Very thorough. Moving on to Article 21, if there's no questions. Sarah?
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $100,000 for the MGL Chapter 41, Section 111F Injury Leave Indemnity Fund. This article was submitted by the select board, it requires a simple majority, and the Finance Committee voted unanimously to approve this motion.
Second.
Just a little bit of discussion. This article is authorizing the town to transfer the sum of $100,000 into the MGL Chapter 41, Section 111F Injury Indemnity Leave Fund for the purpose of paying police officers and firefighters who have sustained injuries in the performance of their duty during the period of their injury leave, who have met the insurance threshold, instead of appropriating these funds from the respectable department budgets.
Any further thoughts or questions, comments? None heard? Moving on to the Article 22.
So, Article 22 will be a vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $195,305.36 to the stabilization fund. So, I don't really do the motion thing until I'm actually making a motion. So, the Town of Millis has adopted a policy to maintain a stabilization fund equal to 5% of its annual general fund budget expenditures to be used for unforeseen and emergency purposes. So this article will transfer about $195,000 from free cash to the stabilization fund, which will put the fund at about 6%. This will help the bonds, the town's bond rating when we need to borrow funds, and it'll allow an extra cushion for any extraordinary expenses we may encounter in future town meetings. The Finance Committee unanimously recommended approval of this article, eight to zero.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Pete.
Does that 6% include the potential for the override, the post potentially approved override figure, or is that just Article Three bottom line as proposed? And since the policy's 5%, maybe it's a moot question, given that if you're at 6% and you add $1 million, maybe you're still there, I don't know.
Understood.
It gets a little bit tricky in how to calculate it.
Any members out there want to add some information? So, let me just paraphrase. So with the override, will that impact the amount that's going to the stabilization fund pre or post?
That would need to go to it in order to abide by the 5% policy.
Correct.
So, the override is not included in the calculation, because it has, it's not a for vote right now.
Yep.
And if it were, I believe it'd be $70,000 we would need to, but I think we have enough in the fund with the 6% that we wouldn't have a problem at this point. We'd meet the 5%. We wouldn't have a problem.
You meet the 5%, getting closer to 6%, even with the override, if it passed.
Right.
If it were not to, how big of a problem would it be if that policy were not met to the penny for, say, six months until fall town meeting where you could then bump it up? You know, is it, is the question not that significant?
It's not that significant, because it's your budget as of June 30. So as of June 30, wherever it is, then we would need to have 5% of that in the stabilization fund, and we would fund it at the fall town meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, it looks like it would be about 5.5%, even if we didn't add to it. And that would, if we did the override but didn't add to the stabilization fund.
Any other further discussion? Jody, you know that there's a Finance Director position open soon?
No, thank you. I could not follow in Carol's footsteps.
No one can.
Yeah, I appreciate it, okay? Any other final thoughts, questions, or comments on Article 22? Any questions, comments, or discussion regarding any of the articles while we have the pre-town meeting open? I got a few, but go ahead, Pete.
Mr. Chair, just an administrative comment. My recommendation would be for anybody that references or needs to reference data that's in the Finance Committee report, like a table or something, that they actually refer to it in their discussion questions, because I know, even in our meetings, without a reference to look at, it's just, it helps when you're able to look at something, and what better reason to have this than to produce it and say, you know, please refer to page 13 for the revolving funds, and not to pick on Jody, you know, any of us that need to refer to any table in here, please put it in your comments, and then give the audience a moment to get there. You'll hear the pages flipping and.
I was just updating my comments for that.
But for everybody.
Now that we have the final report.
But for everybody.
Very good point. So, I can imagine that a town meeting is going to be quite a few more people than there are here tonight, but what I wanted to do is, first of all, I wanted to thank Deirdre for helping me put the report together. She and I were both remote trying to put this together, and we did, so thank you very much for that. I also want to thank all the department heads that showed up tonight, not knowing if there were going to be other residents here asking questions, so I appreciate your expertise and guidance on that. And I also want to thank all of our members here, because we've been going at it pretty hard from January till now with 10-plus meetings. This was a pretty quick pre-town meeting, judging from last year's, but all good. I watched the whole thing again, Pete. So anyway, so to Pete's point, take a look at the references, take a look at your data, your information, and make sure that we are fully prepared to answer all the questions at town meeting, so people can be informed and make the appropriate best vote for the town. And if there are no more further discussion points, then I will close the pre-town meeting, and we will move on with our regular FinCon meeting. Moving on to town meeting procedures, I think we're all veterans here in terms of what to expect with the moderator and the requests. Does anyone have any questions about process protocols? Does anyone have any questions about process protocols? I will have my intro comments, and we will kick off reading the motion. And the moderator will ask for discussion, just as we did tonight. And you can involve all your supporting points. And then we can go from there in terms of what the audience has for questions. Any questions on that? Moving down the list to approve bills payable. So it looks like our invoice here, let's see here.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the payment of seven thousand three hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents to our town publishing for the publishing of the Finance Committee report.
Second. It's been moved in second to approve the Finance Committee report printing of seven thousand three hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? Any abstentions? Pass unanimously. I'm going to pass this around. If everyone would just please sign and pass to the next member, that'd be great. Let's see here. We've got some minutes to approve. Since you're on a roll, do you want to try that? Yes.
I move that we approve the minutes of April third as written.
Second. There's been a motion and seconding to approve the April third Finance Committee minutes as written. Any discussion?
Thank you, as always.
No discussion. All those in, just taking a look at it right now. Although, it is a lot. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Passed unanimously to approve those minutes. And I'll take.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Jody.
I move that we approve the minutes as written of April tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the April tenth Finance Committee minutes as written. Any discussion?
Nobody writes better minutes than Deirdre.
No.
I know. It's unbelievable. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor approving the April tenth Finance Committee minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? None heard? Board or committee liaison update? I don't have anything. Actually, I do have one thing. In the Capital Planning Committee report, in the Finance Committee report, the long-term, that's okay. The, the long-term planning has a hundred and fifty-three million instead of a hundred and thirty-seven million. That number was a typo because they took out the senior center of sixteen million dollars. So the one thirty-seven is the correct number. I will point that out at town meeting.
COA got their approval and of the new car, new van.
Oh, great.
And it is, we're just waiting for it to be delivered. So.
Do we know when that should be?
Hopefully within the next couple of weeks. I think they're just waiting to make sure all the money has been, you know, taken, has been, it's been paid, because it's been approved, it's ready, it's ready to get delivered. But there's some details that have to be just finished.
Okay, fantastic. That's great.
Is it electric?
No.
Hybrid? Standard. Okay.
It's got, I just know that it has cloth interior and that it's just a, it's a basic vehicle for transportation. They didn't get bells and whistles.
No Chevy Tahoe?
No. No.
I was actually wishing it was Car One. I wish it was Car One instead of Chevy Tahoe.
From what I understand, the town is keeping the car that it's replacing so that they can use it. So the car could, as a, well, for the municipal people.
Oh, good.
Because there are times that it's necessary that a vehicle is needed and is not available. So this way, for, rather than the five hundred dollars that they would have gotten for the trade-in, it's better used here by our town people.
Perfect. So any other thoughts? I just have, so we have our fiscal year twenty-five budgets in binders on that counter over there. If anyone would like one, please take one. I believe they're not out yet, but an electronic copy will be available online as well soon. Our next meeting will be during, right before town meeting in room one oh four at seven PM. So everyone could show up for that. That'd be great. Mike Crone will not be here, as he will be away. But all of us should be there. So any other concluding thoughts of the evening?
I move that we adjourn.
Second. There's a motion, second to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, Deirdre.